Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee, the whole meeting for November 1, 2022. I call this meeting to order and again ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Danny?
Here.
Ganzie?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Laporte?
Here.
Swansky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. First item on our committee meeting this evening is under building and zoning, Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. We have one item on our agenda tonight, and that's Title IX, the Building Code Amendment, driveway and apron width. The Planning and Development Service Department receives a large number of building permit applications requesting driveway expansions and additions of driveway ribbons. The current building code specifies the size of a driveway apron, but only provides a minimum size for driveway widths. The Building and Code Enforcement Division is proposing to amend Section 988(c) driveway and apron widths to update and clarify the village standards to ensure the code is being enforced consistently. The proposed changes would provide a minimum and maximum width for driveways, require the apron width to match the driveway width at all of the sidewalks, require a one-foot to two-foot flare for approaches, include all hardscape surfaces in width measurement, require driveways that are installed up to the property line to provide a curb or raised edge to prevent water from flowing directly onto a neighbor's property, allow driveways that exceed the revised standards to be considered legal nonconforming, which would allow the driveway to be repaired or replaced, but not widened. We're going to review this and forward it to the village board for a vote. Does anyone on the committee have any questions?
How many driveways do we currently have about that are not in compliance with this?
It's really hard to estimate how many we have. We get approximately 350 driveway permits a year. Many of these are people wanting to extend the width of the driveway, and it's because we don't have a maximum, people really push the limit, and the only thing we can hold them to is the impervious surface requirement.
Right, right. I know we have that ordinance. Well, let me ask, if we pass this ordinance or this amendment, the existing driveways would all be grandfathered in?
Correct.
Okay. Now, if they had to replace their driveway, would they then have to be in compliance with this?
We would allow them to replace what they have now. They just would not be able to extend it wider if it doesn't meet our regulations.
Thank you.
I have a question. Have there been any complaints about, I understand we've had permits, but have there been complaints about the width of driveway?
There have been. So, there have been driveways that have been denied based on the approach not matching what the proposed driveway width is, and those have been, those get appealed to the village administrator.
Okay, so what, so if someone, I do know that people on the side of their house, once you've passed the driveway portion, you know, there's always, there's an approach, and people have an expanded pad off to the side to park, you know, like a small camper or something. Is that going to affect those?
Those would still be allowed there, but now we're trying to add in the regulation that there has to be a raised edge, because a lot of those go right up to the property line, and then it becomes a drainage issue for the neighbor adjacent. So, we're trying to fix that situation as well. But you would still be allowed to have a parking pad on the side of your home.
You're trying to incorporate a curb along the property that it butts up to, is that correct?
Correct.
What is the maximum width? Did you say there's no maximum width of a driveway?
Currently, there is not.
Okay.
So, we have had people where they've had an approach that is 18 feet wide, and then their driveway is 23, 24 feet wide, and they just end up driving over the parkway and part of their front lawn.
I think they should match.
Yes.
I don't think it should take up the whole front yard either, you know?
That's why we put a maximum in.
I like that.
Some people don't want that straight thing, you know? Some people want the curved entryway and then a wide, wider main area.
Right, and they would still be allowed to do that. We just want to make sure it matches at the driveway or at the sidewalk.
Yeah, so there's some curve to it, yeah.
Okay, Ruby.
Any other questions from the committee? We will forward this on to the village board for a vote. That's all we have under building and zoning tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Next is Community Economic Development, Chairman Ganzie.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three BETA applications tonight. The first one, Banbury Barn BETA application. The staff has been working with Bruce and Jan Sufferin over the past two years on a project to convert the barn on the adjacent property to the main structure of Banbury Fair into a modernized location to serve food and wine. Earlier this year, the Sufferins applied, were approved for a $50,000 BETA grant in support of infrastructure improvements and in addition to their property in support of this project. At that time, staff informed the EDC and village board that we continued working with them on another BETA project more closely related to the buildout of the barn. The barn qualifies for a separate BETA grant due to having its own PIN and its new address of 215 West Railroad Avenue. This BETA application relates to $154,182 of improvements being made to the barn, $82,000 of which are being paid by the landlords applicants with the remainder being paid by their tenant. The primary expenditure is $51,000 to their general contractor, Mark Leffler of Skilled Craft Construction, with additional costs of nearly $20,000 worth of windows and doors and over $7,000 for an upgraded fire alarm system. Staff recommended a maximum grant based on percentage, 50% of the expenditures being made by the applicants only. A BETA grant in the amount of $41,000 was recommended by staff and unanimously supported by the EDC at its meeting on October 10th. Motion to forward this request for a $41,000 BETA grant for the Banbury Barn at 215 West Railroad Avenue to an upcoming village board meeting for a final vote. Any questions?
When do you expect to have it all complete?
Very soon.
You got a loud enough voice, Bruce. We can hear you.
Yeah, we can.
Very soon. We put in all the fixtures yesterday. The bathrooms are done. We put in our most of the flooring today. The kitchen area, the bath, they're all tiled and they're installing different dishwasher and different things in the house. We're looking at this month.
This month? Congratulations. That's fantastic.
You know, we have to go through all the approvals and all that.
Of course.
What's the occupancy, Bruce, for the, how much? Forty-nine. Forty-nine total?
I think at the BDE, there was some confusion on the, on who is actually being billed for these, for these upgrades, whether it's the owner of the property or the tenant.
Well, in the course of the project.
And I can't, and I can't hear you very well, Bruce. I'm sorry.
I forgot she was on Zoom.
So, in the course of the project, the tenant and I both solicited bids for different expenses in, in the development of the building. And so, many of the receipts or invoices were addressed basically according to who solicited the bid request. My tenant's ability to pay expired quite some time ago in the course of the development of the project, and we incurred the cost and paid for the expense thereafter.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, do we, are we going to be expecting another, or, and maybe you wouldn't be the one to answer this, but do you anticipate that we would be expecting another request from the tenant to do further?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, we're at the, like, 10-yard line, right? This is almost completed. You hope so.
I have not been this excited about our business and what it might mean to, for us and for Bartlett since the inception of Banbury Fair. I gotta tell you, this, this is a gift from God, and I have to thank the village for putting these grants as incentives for us to do things that we otherwise would not have done. We don't have the financial wherewithal to, to do these kinds of things, and so, we did it.
Yeah. If you haven't been through it, I would encourage everybody to. It's beautiful in there. So, well done.
It's a 120-year-old relic of downtown Bartlett, you know, that people are gonna, I think, enjoy.
We used to have our haunted house in there.
You did.
Remember that?
And I was the bad guy who bought the, bought the property that nobody wanted.
Yeah, threw us out.
No, I didn't.
Yeah, that was back.
I said you had to pay, pay us $500 for three months to occupy the barn, just for the record, brother.
That was back in the late 70s.
We bought it in 1987.
Yeah, well, the J.C.'s were still doing it then.
Yeah, yeah, and hauling in money hand over fist with that thing.
We have a picture in our basement that was hand painted by someone. I don't remember who it was. My wife did, and she was in the ticket booth collecting the money for the
It was a great thing.
Yeah.
It was a great thing.
Well, that'll be another great thing now.
I, I think so.
Thank you, guys, for all the work. It's fantastic.
So, to clarify, as we move on, it can be applicants by PIN, or so landlord or tenant, correct?
Yes, we, we allow either to apply. A tenant can apply for BETA grants so long as they have the landlord's permission.
All right. The second one we have is the Pastamia BETA application. Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll move this on to the board for a vote then next, next meeting. Two weeks. Yep.
We have the Pastamia BETA application. They're a longtime anchor restaurant business in the streets of Bartlett. Owner-operator Pete, Peter Caruso intends to improve the aesthetics and functionality of his restaurant by removing the existing storefront windows and installing sliding windows to create a more seamless indoor-outdoor atmosphere. Attached are two quotes totaling $41,650, which is $5,650 more than the one quote for $36,000 that was presented to the EDC at its October meeting. This is due to a higher quote from A&amp;S Glass Company and an additional $1,650 estimate for tinting, which were both provided during the week following the EDC meeting. Staff now recommends a BETA grant in the amount of $20,825, which is the maximum 50% amount of the project, and $2,825 higher than the previously recommended amount. Although, the shopping center has benefited from village incentive programs throughout its many years, this is the first direct incentive application for Pastamia. Are there any questions?
Fantastic. Now, where are the sliders going?
Where's Peter?
Come on up.
The front south window.
Okay.
And the east window.
Okay. All right, yep.
So, they're both on the cars.
Yeah. I've seen those at so many places now. They're really neat, so that'll be, that'll be a great addition. That's it? Nobody else is excited but me?
Let me ask you, if this is approved, what's the buildout on, on this? How long will it take?
A week. We're hoping to start next week, hopefully.
Let's hope the weather holds.
Well, if there's no other questions, we forward this request for the $20,825 BETA grant for Pastamia to an upcoming village board meeting for a final vote. All right, let me scroll to the last one. All right, and the last one for tonight, we have Moore Brewing BETA application. Attracting a microbrewery to downtown Bartlett has long been a targeted business. Economic development staff began meeting and negotiating with brothers and village residents Sunny and Perry Patel as their highly successful business, Moore Brewing, thrived in Villa Park and sought possible expansion locations. Through multiple meetings with them, the village negotiated a land sale, sales tax rebate, and provided information on the BETA program. Currently, the applicants are well underway for their two-story-plus basement, 17,325-square-foot facility in the heart of downtown Bartlett. They have provided a highly detailed business plan demonstrating the precision and planning that goes into operating and growing their highly successful business. They have also submitted documentation of over $4.4 million in expenditures, at least $3.6 million of which are BETA-eligible. Therefore, we recommend a BETA grant in the maximum amount of $50,000. The EDC reviewed this application and recommended in favor of the maximum amount at its October 10th meeting. Any questions? I'll ask the question everyone has when it's going to open.
Exactly.
What do you really have, so, the block of the building, so, very soon?
Have you had any trouble getting construction materials? Has there been any?
That was the hardest part.
That's what I thought.
We had a concrete strike during this time, four months and a half, and we had a steel guide going, trying to get it together. It was, it is a mess.
Yeah.
But big part is over, I think. All the little stuff now.
Didn't you have to bring, like, an excavating crew from Ohio or some, someplace from another state? That's tough sledding there. We're glad you're almost home, so, yeah, it's good.
I don't have a specific question regarding Moore Brewing, but I do want to say a couple things. I, I want everybody to realize that as, I was a former EDC member, and Joel Laporte and Stephanie Ganzie were too, the EDC members really dive into these numbers pretty aggressively when they make these decisions, and I know we did as well. It's not free money. It's, we earmarked this money from our gaming, and that money was earmarked to go back into our community. And as if you look around in our community, the money we've given out or, or allocated, it's working. Our downtown is starting to become vibrant. Our streets of Bartlett are becoming vibrant. So, today, the combined totals of roughly about $100,000 in return, these developers are putting about $4.5 million into our community, of which most of it is Moore Brewing, so we do appreciate that. You are going to change the landscape of our downtown Bartlett, so we are extremely excited to have you here, okay? I just, I think it's important to realize that, that when we, we don't give money away just to give it away. This money was gaming revenue that was earmarked, so I'm glad to see the EDC is allocating it properly and it's working.
Yeah. Yeah, I think about four years ago, we asked staff to earmark the gaming, and every penny of the gaming would go toward things like this to enhance our business environment, and I think it's worked very, very well.
It's a good calculation every time they approve it, so, thank you. Thank you all. And Bruce, your business is 75 years around here, I think, right, combined?
Yeah. And Pete's probably been here for 25.
Combined between Pastamia.
How many years is Pastamia?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine years.
Combined, 75 years there.
So, the, the grant for Moore Brewing, will it get paid out once they open?
Yes, we typically pay those out once all the, every i is dotted, every t is crossed. They have a certificate of occupancy, and they're open for business.
The taxpayers' funds are protected.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Great. Well, we'll forward this request for a $50,000 BETA grant from Moore Brewing to an upcoming village board meeting for a final vote.
Good luck, gentlemen.
Yeah, good luck, all of you. That's fantastic. I'd like to see the improvements to our restaurant community.
Thank you, Chairman Ganzie. Last item for our committee of the whole this evening is license and ordinance. Chairman Gunstein?
Thank you, President Wallace, and bear with me, a year and a half on the board. This is the first item I actually elaborate on. It's not on the consent, consent agenda.
Well, thank you, trustee Gunstein. You're done for now.
All right, all right.
We're about ready for a juggle, so.
All right, so tonight, tonight we are here to discuss the Bartlett Park lease. Administration met with Park District over the summer to discuss the renewal of the lease agreement. Staff is seeking direction from the village board regarding the renewal and updating of the lease or the transfer of the park to the ownership of the Bartlett Park District. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Paul Schuhacher for a little bit more information on this.
Thank you, trustee Ganzie. The early days of the Park District was when this lease came into fruition. It, you know, it has a 50-year term, and I, looking back over the, the records, I think there was some concern that the Park District wouldn't be a viable entity. And the original 13-acre park that went to the Park District came from village property, turned over, and that is now part of Sunrise Park. And then the second piece was Bartlett Park, and that, and at that time, we entered into an agreement in which the village owned the park, but the Park District completed all the programming for it, really our partner in, in maintaining that park and growing that park. Since the agreement in the 70s, of course, you know, we've seen a lot of changes to Bartlett Park, the free-to-be-me park improvements made in 2020, significant investment by the Park District of over $1 million. The gazebo was built to recognize our centennial. That's not, that wasn't conceived in the lease because it didn't exist at the time, but the log cabin did. We got an actual legal description because in 50 years, that legal description has disappeared, so we updated that, and really just looking for guidance from the board on what direction you would like that lease to take, if you would like us to refresh it and renew it, or if you'd like to turn over the park itself to the Park District.
Well, before I turn it over to the rest of the committee, I do have one question. We, we have been having a lot of events at this park, and we're increasing them year after year. My question was, for the events that we have there, is there a monetary charge for these events, like Ignite the Courage or any, any events?
National Night Out.
National Night Out, Marion Bright, and so on and so forth, because I mean, I, there's an event there this summer. There's been an event there almost every other weekend, whether it be the dog park and the dog show.
Yeah, I can't speak to Ignite the Courage. I can only speak in terms of what's charged for our events. We are not charged for National Night Out, I believe.
No, Rita's shaking her head.
We issue, we sign on the permit, actually, and, you know, nothing for Marion Bright or the tree lighting and all the years that we've done it.
So, Santa doesn't get charged to sit in the log cabin?
Santa only gets paid in good wishes.
I'll ask the rest of the committee if anybody has any questions or concerns about this.
I don't have any.
I have a question. Is the, sorry, Ray.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Renee.
Has the Park District requested this property?
Yes, they have.
Not formally from their board, but it has been part of our discussion that we had this past summer.
And for nine years.
Yeah.
What's the biggest change we'll see?
Nothing.
We won't sign up on the agreements anymore.
Well, I think the Park District.
Rita Fletcher's here as well.
I think the Park District has maintained that park extremely well. Now, they have the free, free-to-be-me portion in there and whatnot, and, you know, they, they're doing the maintenance of it, and, you know, they're maintaining it. I don't think we need to be in the park business. The Park District does it better than we can. Let, give it to the Park District, let them take care of it, and we can walk away from it, and everybody will be happy, right, Rita?
If we convey it to them, we can carve out, you know, our events to have them there and negotiate that as part of it, even if you turn over ownership to the Park District. Those events can still take place.
Our lease also addresses certain maintenance items. You know, for example, we upgraded all the electricity out there. They made, they did all the improvements to the log cabin. It's kind of been a back and forth. So, to trustee Swansky's question, you know, we wouldn't be maintaining any of the park infrastructure.
I think it should be part of a broader scope. I think that the village should not be in the park business at all. I mean, the village has been around a lot longer than the Park District, obviously, so that's why we own some of the land. But as far as Kohler Fields, Rosika Fields, all this should be under the jurisdiction, in my opinion, of the Bartlett Park District. We are, the key essential services of the village is not to run a Park District. That's why we have a Park District. So, I think it needs to be collaborative, and I think it needs to be well thought out. I know we have Little League, Bartlett Raiders, and those organizations deserve to be represented, and they need to be part of this conversation also, to find out what their goals and expectations are also. Because, I mean, this board has talked about things at Rosika Park for Bartlett Little League and the Raiders. We're not in the park business. This is something the Park District should be working out with, with them and talking about, so I think it, I think it, it's a lot more complex than just, let's turn Bartlett Park over. It's, it's a, it's a broader scope here, I think, and that's just my two cents.
I think that's a great idea. Over the last five years, I think I've sat down with the Little League and the Raiders and the Park District multiple times, just to try to iron out who's in charge of fixing what and maintenance here and maintenance there, and, you know, when, who gets to use it when, and it's been kind of a mess. And I think the Park District is eminently more capable of, of organizing that than the village.
What, what is the advantage or disadvantage of either leasing or turning it over? Like, is there, have you guys laid out both of them versus just signing a lease or handing the property over?
We've never really been part of the operations of the park other than the, the maintenance that we do, and some, we, we don't, we don't, all the policies, I should say, all the policies that govern the park, what goes there, how, how, how it's operated, fall under the, the Park District. So, there is no operational change at the park. There is no particular value to the village in holding the park. Brian, if there's something that I'm missing.
That's true, but I would recommend you look at, every piece is a little different. This piece was owned by the village even before the Park District existed, and that's one reason we have it. I agree that if the board wants to turn those over, we should look at those separately. But, for instance, Rosika Park has the tie-in to the ComEd parking lot easement. It's really a separate issue. I think if the goal is, we try and turn those over, we should, but I think we should look at this Bartlett Park as one issue with the broader goal of trying to turn over some of the other pieces to them.
I agree.
Otherwise, we could bog down with the input on that. Raiders and Little League aren't really relevant, per se, to Bartlett Park. They are on some of the others.
They stand on their own merit. They stand alone. However, it should be a continued conversation.
Agreed. We've started.
And trustee Hopkins is 100% right.
I agree.
The people that use the fields and have the leases with the fields should be the ones, they should be at the table with the conversation before it's turned over, and Bartlett Park has nothing to do with that.
Yeah, Kohler Fields, we got some IDR grant money, and I have to go back and look at what our restrictions are there. We may not be able to turn over ownership, but that can be addressed alternatively in a lease situation. You know, if, if there's a restriction. It wasn't the whole thing, but there, there was legislation passed so that we were, was given to the village of Bartlett. So, that one's a little different, and Rosika's different as well. But I'd say, you know, my recommendation would be, let's proceed with Bartlett Park, direction from you, you folks. We can work out a conveyance, you know, an agreement where they would purchase it for a dollar, and we build in our continued use of it. I would, you know, update things in terms of insurance and indemnification issues in it. You know, it's obviously a different animal if they own it. Some of that, that actually becomes easier in terms of they're in charge, they're the owner, and they take on the liability as far as that goes.
Can we make it $2?
All right, $2.
I have a question.
I'll donate it.
I have a question regarding, the, the Park District's a taxing district, so what does this do to the taxpayer? Is it an even wash, or will the taxes go up on the Park District side because they now have more property?
Well, even wash.
Yeah, it would be an even wash.
Real estate tax exempt, whether we own it or the Park District owns it. Even as the Park District leases it, it doesn't affect the tax, taxpayers at all.
Just to reiterate what trustee Ganzie was saying, and I apologize, I kind of cut you off there. The change here is just a matter of us not doing the paperwork every year, right? Every 50 years. year, right? Every 50 years. I mean, really, that is the change.
And we wouldn't own the park.
Well, I originally said it was on a napkin.
A piece of property that, you know, we aren't going to ever build anything on anyway. It's perfect. And the park that you guys built there has brought in tons. I see so many people at that park. That's fabulous. So I don't, I don't see any issues with...
I think it's time.
Turning it over.
To Brian Maraz's point, if we, do we send this back to staff to get everything line itemed, to what events we want in there?
We'll come up with an agreement.
Okay.
And staff will negotiate some of those, you know, how we figure out, because they own it, what we get to, how we get to use it.
Yeah, go ahead, Rita.
Put it in agreement.
National Night Out, and Marion Bright.
Marion Bright.
With, we talked about right away, said those are all these states, because they're reporting, you guys are reporting to us. We do it together. So we're 100% going forward again. We never take them down.
Okay, good to know.
It is good to know. So send us back to staff, or do you want to send us on to the board for a vote?
Well, we'll have to draft them. You know, sort of the agreement in terms of how we're going to convey it, and we'll bring that back to you.
Okay.
And probably bring it to committee, just so you see those events.
Okay.
We'll do it that way.
Sounds good. That's the last one. Well, no, we have another one here.
Thank you for being here, Miss Fletcher. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. It's not over yet. We need to drop a blood to make sure you're not changing anything, so.
I know one of those board members, too, really well.
You gotta live with it.
You gotta live with the decision that I make here.
Really?
Literally. All right. The next one is the amendment to the massage and bodywork regulations.
Trustee.
This is, even with the village's current regulations for massage establishments and bodywork approach businesses and practitioners, they have been, there have been occurrences of violations and arrests for prostitution based on the strong negative recommendation from the zoning board of appeals on draft amendments to the zoning ordinance to downzone these types of uses. Staff has researched additional, additions to the code to strengthen the massage and bodyworks regulations since their adoption in 2015. The proposed changes include, but are not limited to, updating definitions to match those of the state statute, adding provisions which include prohibiting employees from living in the business premises, and banning sexual suggestive advertising, preventing businesses from quickly transferring ownerships after an arrest for prostitution, requiring the landlords not, requiring that landlords not enter into a lease or approve the assignment of a lease to an unlicensed bodywork approach business or massage establishment. You don't believe I'm reading these things. Enforcement of regulations would also be improved by monitoring a location which has had illegal activity to ensure their bodywork approach business or massage establishment does not open under new ownership without the village licenses, inspections, and background checks, notifying landlords of new regulations, and holding them liable for leases assigned to new unlicensed businesses, regularly verifying that massage therapists and bodywork approach practitioners are properly registered and licensed by the state or village, more frequent periodic inspections of the establishment and businesses, updating the semi-annual inspection reports to include the revised regulations. That is a lot.
It is. And our attorney drafted most of it. So most of the questions regarding to the codes, because it's about licensing, I'm going to allow Brian to answer. The enforcement is really what we're going to step up from the, from the planning and development side.
All right.
So it, I'll just say, if you remember, you know, we looked at this from a zoning perspective, and the direction that we got from the board was to beef up the regulatory side on the licensing and the enforcement. And I think those recommendations that we have outlined really address those concerns that we have with the type of businesses and the problems that we've experienced with finding people living in certain establishments, and really kind of dealt with those more urgent concerns. And, you know, we took a lot of input from all the public hearings that we had on this, and tried to incorporate many of those into the recommendations.
Well, I'm going to turn it over to Brian Maraz, our attorney, to give us a little bit more detail as to what we're doing here.
That summarizes what a lot of the most important changes are. So we were, in 2015, what we're dealing with was, the state wasn't licensing Asian bodyworks establishments. So we were one of the first and came up with regulations to do that, because it was a loophole. And over time, we've seen that people worked around those loopholes. The state statute changed and took away some of our ability. It's always been my position and opinion that the village could license massage establishments, so the business itself, and also bodyworks establishments, whether it was Asian bodyworks, or there's all these other things that are in the definitions that are exempt under the, what was the Massage Licensing Act, it's now the Massage Therapy Act. And so the state, in the interim, stepped in and said, you can't, they've always said, we're the ones who issue massage therapist licenses, and they do the background checks, and they can suspend or revoke them. But they didn't issue them to bodyworks approach practitioners. So our ordinance did. And then the state changed the statute to try and take that over, but they never did do it. And so we were in this limbo where we let some, some of the, where we couldn't cause them to get bodyworks approach practitioner licenses. The state extended it again, left it exempt. So we're going back to what we had. We are going to license massage establishments, bodyworks establishments, and bodyworks practitioners.
Okay.
It's a lot of, they could, there are a number of organizations, but there's definitions that spell out what those are, and we will issue those licenses. As Memo alluded to and as discussed, where there's been arrests, sometimes it's been, it isn't this loophole with Asian bodyworks, it's actual massage business. Sometimes it's the owner, sometimes it's a wayward employee. But rather than deal with a suspension, they'll sell the business. That happened in the downtown, and it was sold to someone. The guy paid $50,000, but never applied for a license. So we didn't even have a license to suspend. They were operating a business. There was an incidence of prostitution, and very clearly so. And we need landlords. I think the primary difference is, we want landlords to see these regulations. A landlord has got a lease, there's a violation, they have a legal obligation to mitigate damages, and they're reluctant not, if that business is closing, not to let them sublet it or assign it to someone else. Well, you know, if they're doing that right away, and they don't come in and get a license, now we've got a new entity, they paid money, we want landlords to know this is out there. They shouldn't be signing leases with these businesses unless they're licensed by us, and they've got licensed practitioners. That's where we've run into some trouble. There's other things in the existing code. We're going to do a better job of enforcing what was there and what is there. You know, but it's not the little stuff as much as, we don't, and the workers, we want to have a current list of who all their employees are. You know, who are your licensed massage therapists? Who are your body practitioners? And issue those licenses. They change, and we don't know what's happening. We've also seen advertising on the internet that's suggestive and things. And, you know, if that's generated by the business, we want to put a capash on that. So it's the problems we've seen in the last, you know, seven, eight years, and try to plug some of those further loopholes, if you will, there. So you'll see a lot of this where they can hide behind different entities. You know, often there's a language barrier, and we're dealing with applications, and the paperwork isn't right, and we send it back, and we make them resubmit, resubmit, till they get it right. And we just have to keep, be diligent and keep an eye on it, and this will give us some of the tools to do that.
So Mike, I'm going to turn this over to the committee to see if anybody has any questions on it.
No, we've put, we've put a lot of work into this over the years, and I'm feeling confident that this tightens it up and hopefully corrects some of the issues that we have and makes it fair to all.
So is it an in-person discussion with landlords and businesses? Because I feel like that was pretty good.
I will say that when we tried to downzone it, there was strong opposition. But when we came up with the 2015 ordinance, Austin Hopkins, a licensed massage therapist, was very involved and gave input, and he had no problem with tougher regulations, because it gives legitimate massage therapists a bad name. I don't see that there would be pushback from legitimate massage business regulations.
I more meant like to tell them, so like to stop anything that could happen before.
Pardon?
To tell the businesses and landlords to like, prevent anything that could happen before.
We're gonna, it's gonna have to be an educational process.
Okay.
So we're going to send them this. I haven't, you know, put in an effective date yet. We're going to tie that into when the new licenses are due and all. But I would, we're going to get this on the books, send it to all the landlords, so that they know what's out there, so they're not, you know, signing these leases. You know, so they know before we're saying, hey, this is a trick bag, you didn't know about it, we're going to find you. We want them to know about it, so that they watch out for it.
We went through this when that incident occurred, and we had a lot of, I had a lot of comments from, from the residents in my area, and we had to do something to tighten the ordinance. And I read this, and from what I could understand, it's, anything was better than what we had. And this is definitely a step in the right directions.
Did the landlord...
I have a question.
What?
Sorry, who is that?
Go ahead.
The, and maybe I missed it, how does this affect existing businesses who might not necessarily meet the new upgraded compliance?
It, so there, we have very restrictive current code as it is. Some of them haven't, don't comply, and we have to make sure that they do. But the changes are not that different from the current regulations. So for a while, while the state took, appeared to preempt us, we were not checking to see that bodyworks practitioners, you know, we didn't require a license from the village. There could be a couple that have bodyworks practitioners that don't meet our regulations. It could affect them. But those regulations were always on the books. We didn't repeal our ordinance, because the state keeps going back and forth between whether they were going to take that over or not. So we would notify them, we would give them some time to comply with, if their employees, to bring in the paperwork to show that they have all the certifications and required training. I didn't change any of the training requirements for a bodyworks practitioner, other than, well, really, we didn't change the hours in terms of training and that type of thing. So it's not like we're changing the rules drastically on them.
We're just going to be enforcing them?
We're, yeah. We've clarified things. We are changing it with respect to landlords. That is new. But they're part of the problem. And so if they know about this beforehand, we're trying to avoid, where they, leases, they should know that before they sign a lease with a massage business, that they have to get a business license. Landlords will sign a lease that says it's your problem, tenant, to get all the proper licenses. Well, landlord needs to know what's out there, what they have to go through.
No, no business is grandfathered in.
That's correct.
Okay, that's, I think that's what, I think that's what Renee was asking. She wanted to make sure no business was grandfathered in, and they were being notified of all these changes going forward.
Yeah. They're not grandfathered in. We're, we're going, anything?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian.
I misunderstood.
Thank you, Brian, for your information. Thank you, staff. Does anybody else have any questions?
Not at all.
That's good, looks good. We'll forward this on to the village board for the final vote.
All right.
Last item on my...
Thank you, Chairman Gunstein. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By Chairman Daney, seconded by Chairman Gunstein. A quick please call the roll.
Trustee Daney?
Yes.
Ganzie?
Yes.
Gunstein?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Report?
Yes.
Swansky?